Okay.
I'll take that one.
Good morning, everyone. Good to see you all. Hope everybody had a nice weekend. This morning, we're gonna be going through our spring 2023 prioritization meeting. Heather is here with us to help facilitate. I'll get us started in with the agenda and then go through a couple slides we typically go through. I'll begin to review how we did last semester, what we got to. There's a couple of things that we didn't get to. And then we can jump right into the prioritization, which again is an activity that we've done for multiple semesters here with the board. I think it's very effective and gives opportunity for us to get on the same page. You don't understand what we're working on over the semester. Really helps our staff prepare and do a good job, and so really appreciate the process we've established over time. Next slide. So we'll allow Heather to do a, maybe I go through kind of my piece until we get a couple more board members and then you can do kind of your check-in.
Absolutely.
Check-in activity. So today, we're gonna be doing our agenda setting activity, and at the end, I'm gonna ask the board to consider having an advocacy retreat in March. As we think about, you know, some of the things that happened last semester, you know, I really think it would be worth our time to spend some time on what a board resolution. You know, when do we pass that? When do we don't pass that? What does that look like? When do we act as individuals? When do we act as a collective? You know, as we advocate, what are the rules to the road on that? I feel like in the fall, we just got into a couple of things that with just some planning and some discussion, we'd be able to clean up. But I'll ask that question at the end, and of course, you know, the collective will decide how we go with it.
There we go. That felt so risky to me.
This vision of the Boulder Valley School District, we develop our children's greatest abilities and make possible the discovery and pursuit of their dreams, which, when fulfilled, will benefit us all. We provide a comprehensive and innovative approach to education and graduate successful, curious lifelong learners who confidently confront the greatest challenges of their time. And our mission, the mission of the Boulder Valley School District, is to create challenging, meaningful, engaging learning opportunities so that all students thrive and are prepared for successful, specifically engaged lives. Our values, we respect the inherent value of each student and incorporate the strengths and diversity of students, families, staff, and communities. Silent inequities, unique learning needs will not be barriers to student success. We address the intellectual growth, health, and physical development, and social, emotional well-being of students. We value accountability and transparency at all levels. At this point, I'm sure that you are all very familiar with all long-term student outcomes. All students benefit from challenging, relevant educational opportunities. We work to reduce disparities in achievement, and every student graduates empowered with the skills necessary for postgraduate success.
Okay. You want to do this one now, or you wanna wait until we get a couple more?
Well, we have one, two, three, four, five. So I think we're okay.
Fantastic.
We do check-ins.
In that case, good morning.
Ben is looking for parking spot.
I think everybody is.
I noticed that it's easier to park when we do this at night. Would love to hear from board members, one thing that you are really proud of that you as a board of the district has accomplished, maybe in the last six months or last semester since we were together. And then if there's something else that's on your mind, we're like, I hope that we can knock this one out of the park in the semester that lies ahead. I'd sure be pleased to hear it. And since we're just still getting settled, we'll start over here. Morning.
Okay. This is not directly the board, but at the board direction. So I sit on the athletic review committee. And at the presentation in the spring, the board asked for some data to break out participation by race, gender, et cetera. And the committee jumped on it, and at our meeting last week, we were shown the dashboard of participation broken down that way, and I think that's a huge step forward. That's never been done before. And it was, and we're gonna continue to work on that. It depends, you know, it all depends on the data that gets put in because they've never done that before. And so we're still working through that, but it's happening, and I just think that's a great accomplishment.
Fantastic. Thanks.
I can think of things, but I can't remember what specifically we've done in the last semester.
I won't penalize you if it's outside the timeframe.
Okay.
This is some of the things we did last semester as a team.
Right.
Cheat sheet.
So I was gonna talk about the restorative justice and, you know, having the school safety advocates. I think that's really forward-looking for us, and we've been a leader among the school districts in the country for a long time, and we continue to be, and that makes me proud.
Excellent. Thanks, Ken.
I'm excited that we're getting to these new bilingual pathways, and I hope in the next semester we can do some more work around what that will look like moving forward and understanding the scope and the scale and ways we can push for even more.
Awesome. Thanks.
Let's see. I think, you know, I'm proud of the work we have done with our metrics and our dashboards and accountability to continuous improvement, even when it doesn't put us in the best light. And really owning where we've been, where we are, where we're headed. I think that is something that I'm proud of the work of the district and the board on. Excellent. Thanks. Richard?
Well, I think all of those things. But we do have the land acknowledgement, by the way. I think it's something that we should all be proud of. And the bilingual pathways, and just recently, we've approved some course additions.
Yeah.
And ethnic studies at the Art High School, hopefully throughout the district. And then the leadership. So, you know, those are, for me, some of the highlights.
Can I add one more thing?
Yes.
I think the board has done a good job in the past six months about getting out of the community more. So at our engagement sessions and at our, like, being consistent about showing up at the teacher roundtables. I'm hearing from the community, a sense of that we are invested in what others people think. Just be more public advocates that way.
And they're noticing. I think that's fantastic, too. Excellent. Hello. You are here just in time to share one thing that you're particularly proud of that the board or the district did in the last semester or so. And Rob has hopefully put up a cheat sheet in case it helps prime the pump of your thinking.
Like, where you want us to go?
Uh-huh, yeah.
I was like, everyone's looking at us. I mean, what comes to my mind off the top of my head really is our work with the Youth Equity Council. I'm really proud of that. I really like the experiences and, like, elevating the Youth Equity Council voices. We have work to do, though, but I think we're, I think that's something really neat and special that BVSD is doing. I'm obviously excited about the bond passing and the work we have to do there as well. So, thank you.
Hello.
I would love to say ERP, but I don't think I can.
You should. You could.
It's getting better.
I thought we agreed not to curse in this meeting.
Is that a swear jar?
You know, it's been a little bit of a challenge, right? So I like the restorative justice and think that we're seeing results from the way we've changed the way we look at discipline. And I'm really proud of that. And I know that other districts are looking at our discipline policies. Thanks to Kathleen. And I will join that and, I mean, worked pretty hard on the bond, having capacity for highest percentage of restorative justice.
Fantastic. Excellent. Anything you wanna add in?
I wanna add lots of things. You know, I just, every semester, we do this, and I think about all the things that we've been able to accomplish together. Right? When I talk with our team, we look back over the past however many years, but even this past semester. I mean, not just passing bond, right, which, by the way, is a ton of work and collective effort and energy. Not just leading the state in this work around disproportionate discipline and restorative justice, which, by the way, nobody else is really, even has the guts to touch, right? They're just pretending it's not happening, and it's wrong, and we don't do that here. The advocacy and the conversation we had around making sure all students have the opportunity to have free lunch, right? The land acknowledgement, the work we're doing with Grad Plus, the tangible results we're seeing from that. You know, what we're doing, the work we're doing with bilingual education, how we're doing it, engaging with our communities, digging in. You know, to Nicole's point, our metrics, the long-range planning, again, we haven't kicked the can on that. We're continuing to really dig in, and the ERP. And while it hasn't been perfect, right, they're never perfect implementations. To give you some perspective, I was meeting with the ERP team a couple weeks ago, and one of the folks in finance says, you know, I know everybody thinks this is bad, but you forget the last time we did this. People were picketing outside of our building.
Wow.
That has not happened, so there you go, right? So in any event, these are the, I'm just really proud of how we work together as a team, how we come together. We talk about things. We're leading this district in ways that's creating positive change. We're seeing the tangible results. We're not just talking about philosophies and letting things go by the wayside. We dig in, come up with plans. By doing this, by doing what we do today, it gives our staff such clarity, right, on what it is that we're looking for. And the process that we have, I think, really respects individual opinions as well as the collective will in a way that I think is a model for governance for the state of Colorado. I just really do. I think that the way that we work together, the way that we organize ourselves, the way we communicate, the way we push each other, I think is just really great. So this is, you know, I always do this. I review the last semester. There's three things I don't know that we got to. We didn't really meet with city councils because we were busy pushing for the bond. And so I met with some city councils, and I know Kathy did, and some others may have as well, trying to get them to support our bond. We had the strategic partnership update coming this week, and we said we were gonna do that last semester, but then Sam left and took a job at CD. And so we felt like, let's give Bianca some time and space. I know Richard had some things he wanted to talk about in regards to strategic partnerships and facility rentals. We'll give some space to do that tomorrow. And then community school concept. This is a little bit fuzzy for me. You know, we started, I think, that we had a clear vision of what we were looking at, then we had a presentation. Again, this is sat with Sam, and so I have that on our prioritization list to come back to. Just not sure kind of where we're gonna end up landing that. I think at one point, we thought about having one simple site that was a community school, but then thinking about the needs of all of our schools and what that looks like, the work of our schools in Boulder, our family resource schools, which leans into this a little bit, some of the partnership work that we do that actually does some of this stuff. So that's one piece that I think I'll need a little bit of guidance on. But that was last semester, so thanks, Heather, for leading us in that discussion. That was great.
Absolutely. All right. What else we got?
So we do this collective agenda-setting topics list, and I think I captured most of what we had. Laura shared some stuff with me this morning that didn't feel like a work session of information. It was just some more, some ideas on things we could do. I try to be really responsive to this. Again, as part of our process, honoring every time somebody says, hey, this is something I'd like to talk about, figuring out ways where we can squeeze that in for at least the board to have a discussion or for us to direct staff to give information for the board to have a discussion. And so we keep a list. Laura has this list. She updates it after every board meeting. And so I would say all of these things, we've been able to squeeze into the prioritization schedule. The only piece that we should probably talk a little bit about or we could talk about is, I know Lisa, I believe you, or Lisa or Richard, you brought up gun storage.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Gun storage safety, and, you know, how do we take action on that collectively? I will say that we take every opportunity to remind our community before breaks, before holidays, hey, look, right, you know, if you have guns, you need to make sure they're stored correctly. And, you know, we've been pretty consistent on that. And folks in the community reach out when they think the timing's appropriate if something's happened, and we're responsive. We have the avenues and mechanisms, and I think it's the right thing to do. And then everything else, I'm happy to present to you because it's weaved in our board, which I'll have to pull forward so you can see. But I believe we've weaved everything in. So these are the things. Now, I've broken the 12-topic rule or the 15-topic rule by adding a 16th gifted talented update. I added that because of the feedback we got the other night in BVSD Connect. And we have this gifted talented audit that's coming out that we need to speak to, right? And I don't know that it's gonna be all great, but it's gonna be a call for action. And I know that we've had folks coming to our board meetings as well. And so these are what we're proposing based on your feedback, based on the rhythm of the work of the district, based on updates to things that you had previously directed us on. These are the proposed priorities, and so I can walk through these, and then we can go talk about if we need to add the lead. Is that okay, Lisa?
I said you were gonna say with Richard and I, he and I had both brought up in different meetings the school lunch period review time, which I don't see on here.
It's on my pending list.
Okay.
It's on my pending list, and so that is under consideration.
We will discuss.
Every year I've been on the board, I've brought up open enrollment, and open enrollment.
That's also in the pending list.
Where's the pending list?
The pending is the white one, 'cause.
Well, if you'll just give me some, give me a minute to pass those through by. So, all right, here's the board. Right, again, like, a lot of what we have on there, I mean, these are things that you've all asked for, right? And some of these are follow-ups so we can close some things out, right? We have on pending elementary school lunch times, policy J E C C, and policy K F, I K F, right? So after I go through all this, we do have some spaces where we might be able to plug some things in, but let me talk you through why I have on the list what I have.
You say what the two policies are about.
Right, we don't remember the soups.
Open enrollment, grad requirements.
Thank you.
There you go. Those are the right ones. All right. Yes.
We're also gonna give us an update on our graduation rates and the difference in special education graduates. Is that?
That's happening on Tuesday. Yeah, that's in my soup update.
And ELD, right?
Yep, yep. I'll talk to you about that tomorrow, or, yes.
So can I ask a process question?
You can, but first I wanna say, can you see the screen where he left that?
I cannot.
No.
But that's okay.
Yeah, while he's sorting that out, go ahead.
I apologize for walking a couple minutes late there, so you might have addressed this. But just like, walk me through, when do we have a chance, are we going to have a chance today to add some ideas to the prioritization list? So is the plan that we're going to go through what's currently out there and then add?
So here's the plan. The list up here is based on previous requests from the board and work that you've put in motion, right? Like, so for example, some of these are directly from the agenda-setting meetings, which, by the way, when these things come up in agenda-setting, that lets me set this board. So I'm gonna walk you through what the board's role is, my role is, and what we're planning to do on all this stuff.
Okay.
So there's only so many things you can add, right? There's only so many things you can add. There's only so much work we can do, right? You've gotta remember, we have a staff, we've got lots of things cooking, you know, most of at the direction of the board. So we, to the extent that there's gonna be an opportunity to add a bunch of things in this meeting, I mean, we can, we have a couple of other topics, maybe one or two things, but things are gonna have to come off because I'm not gonna have the bandwidth to be able to direct staff to do things.
And what has happened also in other meetings is sometimes board members have suggested things, and then Rob has said, you know, that wasn't currently part of the update that we're doing in May on that topic, but it's related. With enough lead time, we can leave that in.
Yep.
So, yeah, you can add stuff. We can move stuff around.
It makes sense that some of these items may no longer, excuse me, may no longer be as high of a priority, right? Are we going to, like, rank order, for lack of a better phrase, or how does that work?
We generally just discuss it, and it sorts itself out.
I will say, though, that if you start pulling stuff, when we start yanking up the emergency brake on work that the board has directed staff to do, that's gonna be tough.
Right. There's a sunk cost thing, but we don't, so let's walk through it here. What's up here and why it's up here, and then we'll figure out if there are things that the board thinks maybe you should slow down or defer or what have you.
Sure, cool.
Okay.
Any other questions before we?
Thank you.
It's a good question. Thanks.
Okay, all right. All right. Go ahead, Laura. You can kinda use her in order. So board members, as you remember, we talked about student fees at our last board meeting. Student fees typically are tied with course requests. We've separated those. I know that we've talked about wanting to have a deeper conversation around student fees as the governance team, and so we have that scheduled.
What does it have to do with restorative justice?
Yeah. I think that that overview piece just didn't get updated.
Oh, yeah. No, it has nothing to do with restorative justice. Sorry.
It's like, you have to pay to have some restorative justice.
April 25th.
Be the lawyer.
April 25th. Okay. All right. Next slide, Laura. Hopefully, I updated the rest of them. Budget process, similar rhythm as in past years. Bill will provide multiple updates, right? We gotta get feedback on budget process. We'll bring you along. The next, we have a mid-year analysis in February. We'll show you the ACFIR. In February, preliminary budget around April 18th, and then May 23rd, proposed budget, and then you'll approve that hopefully in one of the meetings.
Question.
Yes.
You know, budget is a big role of ours. A lot of the presentations that Bill gives are not, a lot of new information is presented, and lots of historical presentation is at the front. It's kind of redundant in some ways. I was wondering if this cadence is normal throughout the state, or like, is it something we, like, we talk about budget a lot and we act on it very little? And I was just wondering if that cadence, given the time it takes, is standard?
I would say that, yes, it's standard if not modeled, right? The fact that, you know, a lot of times, depending upon the district, they'll just bring you a budget, you go this or that, right? Like, I think there's multiple opportunities when we present for everybody to ask questions, gain clarity, gain understanding. If there's things that you'd wanna see within the budget process, I think that's feedback that you can give to me. I can give to Bill, and you can speak to Bill. You know, our budget process isn't winning. I think that you're all aware of that. And so to the extent that there's lots of opportunities to ask questions and gain input, and some of it is redundant on purpose because you never know when a community member is tuning in, and you want the community to know and understand we're good stewards of their dollars. And so some of that's intentional. But if there's feedback or questions, things that you'd like to see, I'd be happy to take that feedback.
I'd also say, I really think it's important, since I'm no longer on the board, you guys are gonna have to be making some pretty serious cuts. And so to the extent that we can model kind of what we're doing and making sure that the budget is a big part of what we talked about, because that's gonna be really large as we hit the cliff and as we hit the cuts again, and decline all the cuts.
Yeah.
How close to reality are we in terms of the serious cuts that Kathy's talking about?
Every year's a different story, right? To the extent that, are we looking at serious cuts this year? No, right? Not at this point unless the governor's budget changes significantly. I think that we're doing the right things around long-range advisory council on the ways that we have structured recent investments to be not recurring forever, but time-stamped in time periods. So we can turn those things off if we needed to. So I think it is always my job to, you know, regardless of what happens, to manage the budget. I take that responsibility seriously. I will say that one of the things that I'm seeing in other districts that we don't do is we don't end up giving huge raises to individuals without having the money and then have to go back and cut to try to find the money for promises that you made that you didn't have the dollars for. I think that our compensation structure is incredibly strong, and, well.
That just sounds stupid. Why would?
I can speak to what we do, and I'm very, I am very.
We can have our judgy eyes about what others.
I'm very confident in the ways that we go. We shrink our staff based on our enrollment numbers, which is the main driver of dollars. We do that, and then we add additional one-time dollars to compensate if we need to, right? Bill does all the right things that you'd wanna see a photo do. I think you all know that, so.
I feel a lot of confidence.
The reason I'm asking the question, Rob, is my past experience with cuts. And I'm not gonna be on the board after November either. Is that some programs get cut.
Sure.
And programs that have been worked get cut. And, you know, I'm just wondering how all that landscape is gonna look like in terms of staff cuts, program cuts, or like, and stuff like that.
I mean, I think.
For that, but that's what's been on my mind lately because, well, I'm not gonna be here, so. I'm an advocate for this, but I won't be able to advocate for that.
You can come to public comment.
Well, yeah, true, but, you know, I know what happened with public comment.
How do you usually structure the conversation around cuts?
Seven years already.
But here's what I'd say, right? Like, so what drives our work, what drives our budget, what drives this board is our strategic plan, right? And, you know, in terms of equipping students, the things that we're passionate about, those things working, those things are embedded within our strategic plan. In the event we were faced with cuts, I wouldn't do those in a dark room and then come out and tell you what the decision was. We'd have to have a collaborative discussion, probably a lot, where you'd have to weigh and prioritize what are the things that are most important, right? You know, typically, what you'd wanna do is you'd wanna preserve the classroom and student experience, right, as a priority. You'd wanna preserve the things that the board felt like was a priority. Again, we haven't made huge ongoing commitments of dollars outside of compensation, right? The big investments that we made, typically, a lot of those are one-time dollars, and so, you know, you could turn those off without a lot of surprise. But we might not wanna do that. In the event that there are huge cuts, we'd be open and transparent about that. I think that's the only way you can do that. Having to kind of live through the recession and other things before, right? We just have to, just, you know, weigh choices, and you start to be weighing what's more important, right, so.
The other thing, Richard, is our community is not used to taking away programs, to your point. So they wanna see, why are we not adding this, and why are we not doing that? And we're not gonna be in an environment, I don't think we're gonna be adding a whole lot. And the other reason, I know it's not a silver bullet, but I love the academic return on investment conversation at least.
Sure.
To your point, Richard, so the programs that we're looking at, we're trying to have some. It's hard to have solid metrics, but at least some metrics to kind of measure.
We have the methodology.
That's better than snail pace, too.
I agree. But we went through the pandemic, and I know it's been moved up a little bit. So anyway, that's sort of the key net it is.
And the other thing is that you have to remember, like, when we think about the results we're getting, they are a collective impact of multiple things we're doing.
Yeah.
Right? You know what I mean? So it becomes to pull this thing out, this thing does that thing, thing does. It doesn't work that way. You start pulling a string, the whole sweater comes apart. So in any event, we'll get to that point. Certainly, I'd check in with board members. We create a process that we're all comfortable with to think about how we'd make those decisions.
Anything else on the budget process or presentations content at this time? Have they convinced you that the presentations have purpose, even though they're a little redundant? All right. Thanks, Rob.
Strategic plan metrics is gonna come to you at the end of the semester.
Anything on that one?
Pretty simplified, yeah. Community school concept. I have that for a work session discussion in May to kind of think where we're at, what we're doing, you know, where are we going with this, right? Is this something that we wanna continue to focus on? Is this something that we feel like we're comfortable with the other things filling in that need? But I do think we have to have a discussion on that to close the loop because we've had lots of discussions prior to. I wouldn't wanna just say, ah, we're not talking about that anymore. I think we need to close the loop on.
I agree with you, and I think that's got a lot of potential. And I think it's something that the district can't handle alone.
So the special education update, as the board will recall, we gave you an update last spring. Within that special education update, we'll talk to swap, which is something that Kathy's brought up a few times as well to just kind of let you know where we are. I think there'll be budget implications as we think about the budget process for more funding for special education that we can bring you along with. But special education update is scheduled for March 14th as an information.
How, how deep is that update going to be?
14 slides. That's, you know, I mean, we aim about 12 to 14 slides so we can get through these in kind of 30, 30-some minutes.
IP's?
What was that? Yeah.
IP's.
IP's, yeah. I think that it'll be, if there are things that you would hope to see in the special education update, I would just ask that you can communicate that with me, and then that way I can communicate that with our team to make sure that they, that they're meeting.
Trace.
I mean, on that note, I do remember we had several people come in and talk about feeling like the translation of the piece, special education. There were some questions around that, so maybe getting an update on that situation.
I think that's what Richard was speaking to.
Yeah.
Laura, can you make that note? Because I'm up here and I can't make the notes. Special education update, the translation of IP's and where we are with that process.
That'd be helpful.
Just, 'cause I overheard a conversation that my wife was having with Michelle. Apparently, there's a, and also with Bianca. They're organizing a, like, a parent conference to talk about new IP's, but for Spanish speakers.
IP's.
IP's. IP's.
Well, again, but again, budget implications, right? Budget implications, right, you would have to come forward through with the budget process. So, again, you, you, you turn that on, you're not turning it off.
But a real clear line between that, I think, for the community to see that link. And that, I think, when I, when I think about budget and the future of the budget, I don't know, I, I would, I wish we could be clearer on costs when we discuss these things and what the financial obligation or impact might be on or off. Um, so we can make those contexts, can, can make some decisions in the context of financial impact. That would be incredibly helpful for me.
So like a fiscal?
What?
A fiscal note on, on some of these things, whether it's community schools or this or, so we have an understanding, cause it might be for some things that we're still fuzzy on or feels like a pipe dream if the price tag is so huge, you know, not necessarily something like this, but who knows? Maybe we would just kind of table that in, in the.
And sometimes we can do that, sometimes things have a very clear cost, right? Translation's not the case.
No, I was just saying.
But I, I hear what you're saying, I think.
Or even a magnitude.
You can project costs, right? Like, we could project what they might be, right? But once you've made a commitment to the community that you're gonna do A, B, C, D, or you've gotta follow through on that, whatever that might cost, right? And to the extent that some things, um, doesn't matter how much it costs, right, like, you should have to do them. So, I think that, uh, that to the extent that, um, that, that we don't understand that, we can create context, we can create context. But I, but I'll just caution the board, like, you know, to the extent that everything's gonna be, you know, this costs it, like, it doesn't always break that clean.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Anything else on this one? Alright.
UPK, universal preschool, we, we are providing you all an update on February fourteenth. On where we are with that, where we are with the application process, you know, that we've just had a lot of ups and downs with the rollout of this at statewide level. We'll give you updates on that, where we are, where our seats are.
Any question on that?
Yeah.
Cause we, we were applying to have Broome Field.
That didn't work out. It didn't work out because if we would've switched, um, our LCO, then we would've lost some significant amount of money.
Oh.
It's okay, we're working through it.
Lisa?
I've heard some things, um, about significant increases in what we're charging for preschool, I don't know if that's part of this or not, can we make sure that that's included in the presentation if costs are going up a lot?
Sure, yeah, we can do that.
Alright.
Alright, next. Give you all an update on grad plus CTE, that'll be March fourteenth. Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Oh, good, Kathy?
Yes.
When you did the CTE update, can you talk about what structures are gonna be in my school to defend? Let's see, people, there's gonna be a full bond.
Sure.
I think more specificity in that.
Sure, sure.
And I'll always add justice on it.
Yeah, I know you will. Okay. Did you get that, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Alright. And then at the end, we'll have Laura read back the list to make sure we got everything.
Yep.
Is that okay? Alright. First preschool, we already did that. Were you going backwards or forwards? Or did I put everything into place?
Those are the two choices.
Already did that.
I had a, let's see, UPK, red one, bilingual one.
There we go, alright.
There we go.
Oh, no, that's where we were on, okay. Uh, bilingual ed update is...
Somewhere in the bottom. Is about to be written down.
Nothing to see up here, talk amongst yourselves.
I was doing a city council retreat over the weekend and one of the council members was like, do other boards and councils get to know what's coming at their future meetings? Cause we don't, and I was like, let me tell you about Rob Anderson and his board. It's awesome, I brag on this board all the time.
I'm gonna put it either, I'm gonna put it May ninth and we'll move it up if we can.
So, are we absolutely sure that the middle school will happen in August?
Yeah. Wheels are in motion, we've already met with the community, we're, yeah, everything's moving in the right directions there.
And will that bilingual update also include structures at, in schools?
You mean principals?
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have, we'll have that information by then.
Excuse me, Richard, could you repeat?
The thing you talked about.
He wants to know if we're gonna have the principal in Angovine yet, by May ninth.
And if we're gonna have a bilingual principal, or not just a regular principal?
We're, we're on the search right now.
Alright.
Joel's not bilingual, he's still in Cary at Sanchez's.
Who?
Joel, at Sanchez's.
I wished he was bilingual, he would do greater.
Moss great, alright.
Alright, next. Sustainability update, this is in board policy, so you will be getting a sustainability update on April twenty-fifth.
Questions?
And that comes to you once a year.
Explain that a little bit?
So, last year, we presented a five-year sustainability plan to the board. In board policy, you are to have a, an annual update on sustainability. And so that is coming through to you in April, right? So that's, that's not a topic anybody's asked for, that's not a topic that's in your prioritization, you're just gonna get it cause it's part of board policy. And it's good because everybody really needs to know and understand the amazing work we're doing in that, in sustainability.
But it tends to be a pretty efficient conversation on account of.
Yeah, 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 it's, it's, it's twelve slides, twenty minutes.
Great.
Alright. National Honor Society, and then, um, because of what Nicole had shared in prioritization, we can add IGDA. Board members, remember, last spring we talked about this, I believe Stacy brought it to us, that the National Honor Society requirements were all over the board. We took a look at that, we did an initial presentation, we said we need a year to figure this out, to create more equity around that. So that's coming to you April eleventh, and then we'll also take a look at IGDA, um, and present, present some information. It'll, we'll do that as a work session, so this, there's additional work the board would want us to do on that policy, you could direct us at that time.
What is IGDA?
Secondary student organizations, that's one of the ones that I mentioned at Athletic Review.
Yeah, so, but, but if we do it in work session, right, it gives you all the space to have conversations, ask questions, and give us direction moving forward. Um, as opposed to just a presentation, so that's why it's work session.
Okay, anything else on that? Alright.
Next. Strategic partnership update is tomorrow. And that's work session as well, so we can have conversation, anyone can ask any questions, we can do, um, we can dig in anywhere that you'd like to dig in. Again, as a reminder, Bianca's been in the position a few months, and so she's providing an update, um, and so, I, I think that's gonna be a great conversation. Alright. So we have not scheduled any meetings, other meetings with other city councils, and so I need some guidance and direction here. To the extent that, here's how this works, with, like, we don't have a official formula to figure this out. We look at who we've met with and who we haven't met with in a while, and then Laura tries to engage with their, the executive director or their director of their city manager, and we try to kind of set these up. Sometimes they've been virtual, sometimes they've been in person, sometimes they fall on these meeting dates, sometimes they're additional meeting dates depending on what city councils meet. Um, so, uh, we just need some direction to the extent that, you know, how many meetings would you like to have? Are you open to meeting at different times outside of board meetings? Do we only wanna s- say we can only meet at these times? All of those factors will determine and help Laura begin to negotiate these, these conversations with other councils.
I actually don't find them helpful at all. I wouldn't be sad if we never did another one. I find them really frustrating, I feel like it's one-sided, we're giving them information about the board, but not once has Boulder City Council in particular told us anything that affects us that they're doing. I, I don't have a lot of use for these meetings.
I just wanted to piggyback on that, I, I think there's value, I wish they'd be restructured because, I mean, even after our last report with Boulder City Council, I talked to a couple members and they felt the same way, like it was a sit and get for everybody, that there wasn't dialogue, there wasn't.
But it's only sit and get for one side.
Yes, no, and that's, they said the same thing, and the, and I would say, and if there are things we can work on as a community together, maybe there's more purpose behind the meetings, like, oh, let's target X, or we're working on, how can we actually partner rather than a sit and get? So I, if they could be reformulated, I would think they would have value, but currently I, I kind of, I agree. Lisa, and then Kitty?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll agree and say what I say every time, which is I don't find the virtual meetings useful. I think when we had the in-person meeting here with Boulder City Council, we only had one, I think when Stacy and I started, I thought that was really useful. There was a lot of back and forth, there was a lot of interesting conversation, a lot of side work developed from people coming up with projects. But the virtual meetings are constrained in a way that don't allow any of those organic things to occur, so it's just you sharing things, which is great for them to hear, but I'm not sure that the rest of us have a role in being in those meetings.
But they don't share.
That's what I mean, like, I appreciate Rob updating city councils on what we're doing, but I'm not sure that it's useful to try and coordinate all of our schedules for that.
Kitty, I was gonna take a different view, I mean, I agree with the way they're structured now, and especially if they're virtual, there's not a lot of value. But I think there is value, meeting in person, getting to know each other, and sharing two ways. Not just having us, here's what we're doing, here's what we're doing, but have them, you know, talk to us and share, and I think that would be, um, good info, uh, yeah, would be a good thing to do, but in person.
Just to call it queer, I've had, like, I agree completely, and I think maybe the thing to do, because we're obviously not gonna have in-person meetings with every one of our city councils every year, but maybe if we could do one every semester with the city council, so that each term, I think everyone would get through all the city councils, and then maybe also virtual optional meetings where you're letting folks know what's going on with us. That would be my suggestion for a way that I think we could really get value out of these.
So, oh, go ahead, Ben.
I just wanna add too, that it sounds like we really need to have clearer expectations communicated to the city councils as well. Like, I'm assuming we haven't really said, hey, we're expecting you to kind of dialogue with us as a whole, too. It sounds like they don't really know what we want from them.
Exactly, I under, I understand what you're saying, but why wouldn't they want to do that? I don't, I don't get it.
So, so here's what I'm hearing, right? So, uh, that we wanna have conversations with city councils, right, but less structured. You know, city councils aren't asking us for meetings, like, to be clear, like, we're reaching out to them, right? So, so, and, you know, they don't answer to us, they don't answer to me, they don't answer to Laura, they don't answer, they answer to their constituents. Um, and so, uh, I'm just trying to think how we move forward. I'm ha, and, and if, and, and it is useful that I update, you know, that there is, even though maybe like, board members, you didn't get everything you wanted out of those meetings, it is, it's important for city council members to know and understand a couple of things. And, and city councils always change, right, so that's why you always have to go back out. It's important for them to know the work we're doing, right? Because they make a lot of assumptions on what we do, what we don't do, right? They get, they get contacted by the same constituents that contact you, right? And those constituents tell stories to them about us, that's, that, that may or may not be accurate, right? Like, if somebody emails you something, right, that, oh my gosh, is this really happening, you've called me, I'm like, no, no, this is what's happening, alright, present. So, so, so clarity of information, also as community members engage city councils, so, city councils knowing the process and understanding how they can kick that back to us so we can handle that, I think is important, right? But what I'm hearing, what, what your, your ultimate, uh, best hopes would be for these meetings, is we'd have an issue we're both working on and, and, and being able to kind of really think about collaborating with city councils on what could we both collectively do to solve the issue?
Or, or opportunities.
Right, yeah.
Okay, because I think that, uh, community schools is a perfect opportunity.
So then I, so then I'd ask the board this question, so, do, as opposed to saying, hey, we'd love to meet with you, right? Would it better be, would there be better direction, say, hey, we wanna meet with you on this, and here's what we hope for, are you open to that, yes or no? Because every city manager, right, is doing what I do with their board, like, trying to organize the work. So this idea that those things are gonna sync up perfectly on an issue, then, and then we're all gonna have a conversation, and we're all gonna agree and move forward, like, the likelihood of that is pretty low. I mean, is that fair, Heather, you work with city councils? So, like, I hear you, I, we, I could try, I'm, I'm happy to try. Um, but I think I'm just gonna have to, Laura and I are gonna sit on how we, you know, what are the spots we think are opportunities to do that? I'd get, try to get the collective, well, board says, yes, we wanna meet with them about that, and then we try to negotiate.
Nicole, and then Kitty? Well, I was just gonna use an ex, as an example, last semester, our constituents and Boulder City Council constituents, we're sending lots of emails about Boulder Creek Path and the modular home factory. I mean, those are like synergistic opportunities for us to sit down and, and maybe have a conversation, particularly like mobile home, it was in our, both of our best interests. But something like that, where we can work together on, feels more opportunistic and better for our community.
Kathy? I don't know how we would identify those topics without talking with them first. I'm not comfortable with having you try to guess what would be in the biggest interest of the area.
I think, yeah, that's exactly what I'd be doing.
So, I mean, you bring up an example for Boulder, but what would you say for Erie, we don't know. What would you say for Superior, we don't know. So maybe what we say is our first meeting is to come up with a structure that's working for both of us, like have an organization, no. But I just don't, I don't think we could try to pick a topic, if we pick the wrong topic, they'll never show up.
They may not show up anyway.
Good point.
I feel like, my issue is that when there's something that involves a school district, we're not hearing about it from them. So I'm not sure that even this, what you're talking about, is gonna, I hate to be so cynical, but after three years, that's where I am.
I'm wondering if I should be setting up meetings this semester with all of the city managers to have this conversation, to see what they think, right? And so maybe this semester, we don't meet with city councils as part of my work of the semester. I would reach out and Laura would set up meetings, and I'll meet with, um, I'll meet with all the city managers, right? And, and, and talk to them about, hey, this is what our board would love to do, how would you see this working, what could that look like? And then I could give the board a report back out, um, uh, and I, we could do a work session, I could just share it with you, I could share it with you in our one-on-one meetings, however it's going. I, I think, I feel like that's probably the best way to get to the, the place where you all wanna be.
Lisa had a thought, and then Kitty?
That sounds good, and also I, I think actually Erie and Superior are interesting examples, because both of them, we've got building and rebuilding happening there that I think is interesting. Which leads me to the idea that maybe some of these conversations could focus on some of the questions we have around demographics and enrollment and declining enrollment, and having specific targeted conversations with cities about what does the population look like, where is this population going, how much decline are we seeing? That feels like an area of shared interest for both us and cities have these, have these concerns and questions that in some ways are maybe more useful than a just a top-down overview of what schools are doing, what does the future of the city look like, and how do schools participate in that? Especially for the long-term questions about whether we need more schools, fewer schools, our cutting service.
Kathy?
You would know this, Heather, when I talk to other school board members along the front range, counties get together with the cities and with the counties and with the school districts, they ha, and for some reason Boulder's just like insular and, you know, we, we don't talk to the county, and we don't like the city, and we don't talk to Broome Field. I don't know why that is, but I, that's what frustrates me, because I know that these other counties are having like county reunions of all their electives, where they have this kind of sharing of information.
I would say highly variable county to county, but it certainly does happen in a lot of places. Boulder's unique and special in so many ways.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think Rob's idea, so, I spend a fair amount of time with the Boulder City Council, not so much with the others, um, but I think your, your approach makes sense. But getting to Lisa's idea, to, to me, the conversation would be around, what's your plan, what's your development horizon? Where are those communities coming in, what's the timeframe there, what kind of populations are you expecting? And any city manager could help you figure out who was the right group of humans to have that conversation with, cause it might actually not be with council. Or it might be with a, you know, like a subset of council and the planning director, like, there's a lot of different ways where you could have sharing of information.
So, so why don't we do this, as, as a proposal? Laura can send out a sheet of every city municipality we work with, right? Cause we work with a bunch. And then within each municipality, any topics that you could think might be beneficial as an individual board member to talk to Superior, Erie, whatever about, right? Cause I think they might be different cities, city. Right, then I could take a look at that information, I can have the collective list and see if there's major themes amongst all of you all, right? Um, and then when I schedule the meetings with the city manager, say, look, this is what my board's interested in talking to you all about, that we feel like these are topics that we have some vested interest in, right? What if, how, how would we go forward to make that happen? Does that sound like, so, so every board member would have the opportunity to provide me input on what they'd want me to talk with the city manager about? I'd have real clear direction, right? And then after that conversation, right? Now, we're gonna be dependent on the city managers listening to the conversation, going back to their board, their, their councils, their board, like, that, I mean, you, it is, we gotta be, you know, they gotta have some faith there that they'll do that. Or they may say, look, our board isn't in a functioning place, our board is, you know, we, we can't take on anything. Now, like, there, those are, those are, like, just know that those are answers that might come back to everybody.
Nicole, and then Kitty?
And I was just gonna say, and make sure that they, if they don't feel like it's a benefit of them, that we're not strong-arming them to have these meetings, these need to be mutually beneficial. And I don't want them to feel like, oh, we have to meet with the Boulder Valley Board of, you know, Board of Education.
You don't want a pity day?
No. And so, for them to say no is okay too.
Kathy? So I was gonna ask for those counties that do get all the electeds together, do they typically do it at once where everyone's together? I think that's a great idea, and one of the benefits I see from meeting with councils and, you know, perhaps the commissioners, is just to get to know one another some. So that there is at least a, an acquaintanceship between us, and makes us, makes it easier that if somebody emails lobby at city council complaining about such and such to do with the district. You know, a board member who knows that person, you, you can talk, I mean, I'm not respond on behalf of the board, but, you know, just be able to talk to one another.
And I, and, and some places do it, um, just once a year, or even just every couple of years, and they get all the electeds together, and they say, what's everyone freaked out about? Like, what are we all really worried about? And then, like, there was a lot of, of action around this in, in, um, in Adams and Jefferson County for a while on homelessness, where they would just have these huge meetings, be like, what's everyone doing? What are we gonna do together? How are we gonna solve this? And then they got some really solid action, sort of, steps that came out of those. Um, so you can do it around a topic, if there's something shared, or you can get together to identify some topics, and then I think that, that, just the getting to know each other.
I, I would say one last thing, uh, city managers will bring a list too.
Oh, yeah.
So there may be some cities that want us to work on things that it's not on any of our boards.
Yep.
Right, aren't in any of the priorities of here, so, like, it's a two-way conversation. They may want us to take on things that we'd rather not take on, or we don't have the bandwidth to take on, or we would have to, we would have to, you know, to ramp up bandwidth to do. So just to know and understand, like, this is a really good idea, and super complicated, and I'm happy to, to jump in and see what we can do. But it will take a lot of energy, a lot of manpower, and to the extent that, that we're gonna, maybe we, maybe we get one or two things that happen, right? But, like, nobody's reached out to me, I, we've been here, I, nobody's reached out to us to, to meet that I know of.
And I haven't heard your names being raised during Boulder City Council things, but I, again, I don't interact with the others.
Yeah, I just wanna acknowledge the hard work that it does pay to, to get those meetings, and it was in our direction, so I wanna acknowledge that, even though I'm being all negative Nellie. And I appreciate that, and I think it is useful for them, I'm just saying, I don't find it useful for me. And I think it is important for them to hear what, what we're doing from you. I just don't find them useful from me, I can't speak for all of us.
My very fir- first community working group that I did for the city of Boulder was around the closing of Washington School, and the redevelopment of Washington School. Um, so I think, you know, Lisa might be on to something, as you think about the changing demographics in the community, and then some of the racial justice stuff that they're also grappling with in some of these communities. Might be where you probably have some alignment, but the city managers would know that.
Go ahead, Kathy. I also think there's a big benefit from what you're bringing up, Rob, about what cities want us to do, and, and discussing that with them. And if it's something we are doing or can do, that's great, if we can't, then talking to them about it, so that they don't sit in their little isolated world going, well, the school district won't do X, Y, Z. Without understanding why.
So here's what I'll do, I'll have Laura start to work on this. So between these meetings, those te- the roundtables, the connects, the, just trying to find some time, poor Laura, her job just gets a little more complicated. Wh- when I meet the city managers, I'm, I'll, I'll bring them a lead behind on what's happening with the district, the high points, right? Like, the, the success deck, so folks know, I'll also leave them, and some of you have seen us have been on the board, I created a sheet on what to do if somebody calls you about an issue with the school district. Like, here's how you route it back to us, and here's how we'll close the commute, I'll leave that behind for city managers, and, and hope that they would distribute that, and, um, and we'll go from there.
Excellent.
All right?
Does, does this approach, um, for the city council meetings, Rob, create any additional breathing room in our schedule? Or since these things weren't scheduled, it doesn't give us some, some new, a zone?
No, I mean, we were really thinking that these meetings would probably be off-schedule, right? Or you'd have to dump something to be able to do that.
Okay.
So not really, um, if anything, it just locks my schedule up a little bit more.
That's fine, great. Next.
So we wanna give you an update on strategic plan in terms of the changes and positive impacts we've seen to construction. And I know I added this one. Yeah, may not. Work session, quick, thirty, forty minutes.
Question, go ahead.
Um, in that, are you gonna tease out some findings from high-support schools, medium-support schools, low-support schools? The ones that were, you know, you have to change this in practice versus kind of the optional, are we gonna tease any of that out?
Laura's writing that down, I think we can think about how, you know, what are the things that we're doing that are, the intensities dependent on, on the kind of band of schools they sit within? What are we doing this university? Does that sound, does that answer, did you get that, Laura?
She's writing so fast. Anything else on this one?
Okay.
All right.
There we go.
So you're gonna get a couple long-range advisory council updates, one in February, one in May? Just as a reminder, this is a, um, an advisory council that is going to be, not looking to solve our issue of declining enrollment, but to try to create some parameters on when we should take an incidence at a school seriously, and then what the steps would be to follow, right? And so that is what they're talking about, they've been meeting about, we've got twenty-some members of the committee, I think you've seen those members, I think you approved the membership. And so, two updates on long-range advisory council.
Kathy, and I, do you get the a- agenda in advance of what they're talking about?
I'm not certain.
I don't remember if we have, but I would find it interesting.
Laura's writing that down to look into?
Yeah, to see, you know, typically, we set those out in advance, I don't think that would be an issue.
Are they also looking at, um, the homeschool boundaries?
No, I think that what they, what, what we, what we're gonna ask them to do is to think through, um, when, when is a district, should we say, this school's enrollment is at a place where we need to do something? So, that's something, right? I think, um, is, it, you know, we, we will have to discuss what that something could be, right? And we've talked about this loosely, you know, do you, you know, you can change boundaries, right? But with open enrollment in space everywhere, I don't know how effective that is. You can change the focus of a school, you can change open enrollment preferences, you can change transportation, you know, there's, there's some things that are within our realm that we could do. And, you know, unlike Denver, Jeffco, Aurora, where you're talking about fifteen schools, like, major upheasals, we're talking about three, four schools, right? Maybe one school at a time, um, it's just different, so, uh, but, uh, but yes, so, so we're not, we, that, I mean, that would be for us to discuss. I think for them, it's from a community perspective, when does a school get so small that your kids aren't getting what you'd expect from them, right? And I, and I think that that's what they're, they're really discussing.
Kathy and then Nicole.
Do you wanna just have a stream of what you said about Washington, and how many schools was that? It could be seen as major people when you put them on one school.
Oh, 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 it'll be, well, well, if the idea is to close a school, I have a whole other thing, I was talking about, what do you do when you don't have enough kids, right? Like, and I think that's a different decision, like, people have jumped to the conclusion that, oh, you have declining enrollment, you're gonna have to close this, at some point, maybe, right? I think that there's ways and things that, that we can appro- there's ways we can approach this, so that's not the first move. And I don't, I don't set you all up for failure by saying either close the school or not, right? I won't do that to you, I just need you to hear me very clearly, like, we'll not do that to you, we're gonna have lots of discussion. Where this committee is gonna help us build runway, so if we do have something, we're gonna have opportunity to try some things, right? And show good faith with our community, engage our community, I will not.
If Washington wasn't closed because of declining enrollment, either.
Nicole?
So, um, tacking on a little bit to what Stacy said, we have policies around transportation and open enrollment. Um, we don't have in our policy of when we re- what, what, um, triggers us maybe re-
Yeah, I think that that's what, yeah.
Drying our homeschool boundaries? And so I think, can that be something, maybe this committee doesn't explore, but we get in, in place ahead of ever needing to execute it? So we're not in a situ- some maybe sooner or later.
Absolutely, absolutely, you, you, absolutely. No, I think that if I'm, if I'm, if, if our long-range advisory committee lands things where we'd hoped, right? They're gonna come up with some things that, that consider that then we could implement in board policy and regulation, right? Then, then we'll put, we'll button this thing up, so we know and understand that there's a rhythm for the school district, that there's, you know, there's a decision that's gonna be made. That would be the hope.
Anything else on that? Denver's done a spectacular job of telling you how not to talk about closing schools, so that, I appreciate them leading.
This was brought up in prioritization, curriculum adoption policy, I think that it's worth us talking about as a, as a district and to our community. I think that when I go out in our teacher roundtables and you're out there with me, right? You see, we see huge lagging gaps in regards to where we've adopted high-quality curriculum that allows teachers the clarity and the resource they need to do a good job. Um, and we're balancing this teacher autonomy versus, like, you know, just, you know, some, some, you know, setting the floor for what we expect, um, in our, in our subjects. We've done that with prioritization standards, you know, the, the thing that I think is really important, of, of all the secondary roundtables I did in the, in the fall, what I heard very clearly is PD that's not aligned directly to curriculum, that teachers don't find useful. Like, but if I give a teacher, here's a really good book, and here's training how to use that book, or that set of resources to teach these standards, right? Like, we've done with foundations, right? If we try to take foundations out of schools right now, I, I had my first elementary school roundtable on Friday, and four teachers brought up. We know that you're going through this curriculum of adoption, replace fountains, and, you know, do not touch foundations, because we're seeing it work. We're literally seeing third graders better prepared than they've ever been prepared. So, but that's because we bought a resource, provided training, and we gave time to handle it, right? And I think the, so in any event, I think we should look at the policy, I have this scheduled for April eleventh. What we'll do is we'll share with you what the policy is, let the board ask questions, right? Give us some direction, and it'll give Ca- Kathleen an opportunity as we think about that policy, is it good enough? Do we need to revise it? Do we need to update a regulation to create clarity, right? Like, how do we make sure that we get things on the cycle in ways that make sense? Any questions on that?
Just nodding.
Give the talented update, um, I think that we are going to have an audit from the state. I know that Nicole was at a meeting, um, we heard this at our first PBSD connects, uh, multiple inquiries on where are we at? You know, I think that we need to make clear for our community what the resources that, that are given to us by the state, what are not given by the state, what we currently do, what we currently don't do. You know, I have that for May sixteenth in a work session, so the board can direct us after hearing the update, what are the next steps around this? Uh, we could share with you some of our ideas and thoughts, um, but, but I feel like that's an important topic. So as community members come, and we've already had community members come, what are you doing, give the calendar, we can say, hey, we have this on the docket for May sixteenth, we're gonna have a conversational work session. And so folks know that we've heard them, and that we're considering it, and we're gonna consider all the factors that go into what we're, what we're doing there.
You said there's likely, likely going to be an audit by the state, is that what you're trying to?
No, we, we went through an audit, we just haven't gotten the results yet. And I'll give you the results before the update, but I wanna be able to discuss those in, in a public place. I just don't know when it's, I put it in, cause I don't know when we're getting it, so.
So that's an ish up there?
No, no, that's hard, I mean, yeah.
It'll be out by then.
Oh, we got it, okay.
I mean, if, if something switches around and we feel like we need to move it forward, I mean, that's why these are magnets, so.
Cool, all right.
Okay, so you can go back to that last slide.
Okay.
So.
Yep, go, Nicole.
Yes.
Can I, to Stacy's point about open enrollment, I think that one's been asked about a lot, it's not on there. Reviewing those policies, my understanding is best in the period immediately following open enrollment, which is now, and getting it done before open enrollment starts again, which is next fall. And so I'm just really worried about the time sensitivity of doing this when we're not in an active open enrollment window, and how can we make that work?
I would say the only wrinkle to that is the work our long-range advisory committee is doing, and how open enrollment may or may not play a role. We can have a discussion, if the board would choose, on what's in the policy, what isn't in the policy, we can do that and talk about that. I don't know, to, Nicole, to your point, I don't know that it's even reasonable to think we could touch, we could start talking about it in the spring and have a change for the fall. I think we're gonna probably need a year to think through with that, I just think it's gonna be a deep conversation. I, I, unless you think that there's tweaks that are gonna happen to this thing, and when we think about, I mean, I would think that there's gonna be lots of thoughts and opinions on something that's a lot of people are gonna care about, and you're gonna hear a lot about, right? You're gonna have a lot of people saying, don't touch it, it works just fine, my kids get where they wanna be, and you start touching it to fix problems, you're gonna see, you're gonna, you're gonna begin to create problems you haven't even seen.
Remind us when the long-range advisory report, or is it scheduled?
You know, our hope is to have their, their, their final report out here in May.
Okay.
Right, but, but that's not to say, like, 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 think, you know, you could start talking about it, right? You could start talking about it, and I'm happy to do that, we've got some space in here, I can put this magnet on the board. We can present to you what's in it, we can really talk about it, you could share your thoughts, opinions, and ideas. When you talk about this, the public is going to engage, they're gonna give you their thoughts and ideas that you may not have been thinking about, right? And then we're gonna have a long-range advisory council, so, like, we could put this, I could put this on March twenty-first, right after the superintendent's honor roll. We could lock in and have a, we could talk about this, or I could, I mean, I could put it anywhere.
Let's hear some thoughts based on that information.
We could, we could talk about it February fourteenth, I have no work session.
Okay, Rob, so many choices, hold on, let's hear people think. All right, Kathy?
I don't know what magnet you're talking about.
You said all the rolling.
This is our open enrollment policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Sorry.
I mean, you can't read that. Especially when he moves it around. Right, I wanna hear from Kathy, I wanna come back and see if your thinking changes, and then come back and see if your thinking has changed at all, Kathy, go.
Related to open enrollment, I'm curious what's gonna happen when you see our preschool numbers, because with the sped issues and the idea that you can pick your preschool, but then the preschool can say, no, you're concerned that kid, and say, we charge, and just wondering if people want that conversation.
That makes the conversation more complicated.
I know, but it's important enough.
Well, we have, all right. Okay, so write this down, well, let's decide if we're gonna talk about this or not? If we're gonna talk about this, then, then I'd have Laura write a note to say, add that into the conversation.
Okay, yeah, I, I have a whole bunch of people stacked up, Stacy, what are your thoughts now?
I have a few thoughts, um, when I brought this up, I think, three years ago, it wasn't necessarily about the policy. It was more about hearing from the office, how is it going? How, you know, what does it look like? Where are kids going, where are they not going? It's not just the policy that I'm, I've been asking about.
Okay.
Um, because, yes, that is all driven by the policy, but I, but it's more.
And with that framing, in your mind, is there value in having that conversation as soon as you can fit it in, prior to the report out from the long-range advisory?
Yeah, I, I'm not sure that's direct, the policy might be directly connected with what the long-range.
Well, I think we, what we could do is, if I, if this is a standalone one-hour work session, which I'm, it's starting to feel like that's what it would be. All right, we can give you an update on what's happened in open enrollment?
Mm-hmm.
Shake it out, you know, I know that we share that, I think, but don't we share that publicly?
The metrics, all the metrics for where people choose, where they go is online.
Yeah, where they, where they're, we choose not to go, where they wanna go?
Yeah.
And then we can give you an update on what's in the policy.
Let's, let's hear some other thoughts, does your, does your thinking change at all based on that conversation? Fantastic, Beth, and then Lisa.
Well, I, I, what I heard Stacy say, and I think this makes a lot of sense, is beyond the numbers, we're looking for a little bit more information about, like, why are students choosing to go to school X versus school Y? Can we get any of that data?
No.
Any of that information?
I'm not even sure I care about that, I mean, I think we can figure out what that's about. I don't think that's a difficult.
There's ways we can get that, if, if it's the board's, if the board directs us after having the meeting, if there's a troubling pattern, right? You, you'd wanna look at the patterns, maybe, you know, if there's a troubling pattern, like, why, you know, not, not a trouble, like, not troubling, but an outlier pattern. Like, people are leaving the school in droves and going, or people can't get enough of this school? Like, we could start to ask those questions, but I would wanna have the conversation first, and then you all direct us to, to figure that out, because that may take some resource to dig in and figure that out. And after you've seen the information, everybody might say, yes, Rob, do that, then I'd say, eh.
But, but, sorry.
Okay.
Am I speaking out of turn?
Yep.
Um, but, the trends, I think, are more interesting to me than why. So, you know, in recent years, Sparrow View had a huge waiting list, and then it switched over to Boulder High, and, you know, and then sent, no one wanted to go to Centaurus. Now everyone wants to go to Centaurus, like, those kinda things, I, I'd like to see, and to hear from the open enrollment office, how things are going for them. Cause every year, it's a different story, oh, things went fine, this year was awful. I just, I just wanna hear more, I just, I don't think we've ever really gotten any kinda presentation of that.
Cool, Lisa, and then Kathy.
Well, two things, one, I think, um, in response to what Beth was saying, I've suggested before that I'm interested in the why around transportation, that I think the city of Boulder is as well. So if we're seeing folks that are open-enrolling from one neighborhood school to another, how many of these things are causing increased kinds of transportation issues in the city, and how many are actually decreasing them? So if we're talking about whys, that's something I'm interested in, are people going from Mesa to Eisenhower because it's closer to their daycare, because it's closer to the bike path? But I think there's a lot of questions in Boulder right now around long-term transportation solutions, and if we have evidence that a lot of this open enrollment is about people trying to make their transportation days more efficient, then that's interesting. But that's just sort of responsive to the why question, I think the, the thing I really wanna say is that I agree with you that this is a really big topic. And that I think both for this and for the advocacy conversation that you've suggested we're gonna have next, I, I wanna- I wanna point out that this board is gonna change by three or four people in November, and that some of these may be best served after that board flip. I don't know that there is huge value in some of these larger-scale, long-term conversations being had by a board on its way out.
Except that I asked for it.
Well, and I don't like that, a discussion, I'm just saying, for the bigger part, where Rob is saying, like, this is launching into a bigger picture thing. I'm saying, that's a bigger picture than a new board should launch into, but also, I think, an hour update seems reasonable.
Kathy?
Stacy, when you want to look at the trends, how far back would you wanna go? Because I don't know, it's really helpful, but I just think it'd be good to know, do we wanna go back two years, three years, and we can see if it's a trend, and all the data?
Well, I think the pandemic here messes everything up, so probably since then.
I mean, on our website, on BBSD's website, they go back to, like, before 2010. You don't, they have all, it's all publics, they have it, but I don't know if we need, you know, so.
But I think it's nice to have a presentation instead of just saying, go to the website. And I have a question. When you, because I didn't have to open enrollment kids this long-term group. We don't know why, do we? I mean, to divide, to dive into the why, how would we do that?
Well, I think that, first and foremost, you have a third, traditionally a third of the parents in BBSD do not go to their homes.
But we don't know, we don't ask them why.
No, we don't. I mean, why don't we present the information? We can try to get to the why, but people's whys are gonna, it's not like one why, this is gonna be, this is very different. Why is the fact that Colorado has this school choice law that lets you go anywhere you wanna go?
Right.
Right, which makes all of this other stuff really, really complicated in regards to balancing out populations, making sure that your schools are filled, that you don't have these haves or have-nots. People can do whatever they want to, but the issues that all these other school districts are facing is because of this school choice piece.
And I think the big whys you know about. I mean, prior to your time, people would not go to Columbine. They just wouldn't go. Everyone knew why, and they fixed it, and now people wanna go to Columbine, like, I think the.
You're saying the same thing as Sanchez.
That's right, I think the big whys are not a mystery. And it, yeah, run math for a long time.
Let's think about it this way, here's, here's, I'll, I'll, I'll give you kind of a peek into the future, right? So, we'll have this presentation, right? If after that presentation you wanna know why, I'm gonna call probably the Jellin Strategies and have to do some targeted polling around folks, these are the folks that open enroll to try to get some insight, right? That would be the way that you'd get that. Or we could send out a survey, and then folks might respond or not, right? But you'd have to, to, to get to the why, you'd have to ask people why. That would be what I, that would be the next thing that I could present that information, if that would be helpful.
So let's jump off that bridge after we have the one-hour presentation.
So it feels like we're doing it well, Kitty.
Yep.
So couldn't it just be part of the application process?
I don't think you can do that.
No, I think that would be.
Again, because then you're like, you're getting too intrusive.
You don't have the conversation now, the conversation we have now.
The reason they're doing it is because the state law lets them. That's, that's why.
Alright, Nicole, last thought before we plug this one in?
I, I'm just gonna play devil's advocate and say, one benefit of starting to work on some of these policies with our existing board is that we aren't running on a policy, or we, maybe we are coming from a place of leave it better than we received it, or we've worked, been working on these longstanding issues around equity, and, and we, as a board, have bought into that. And so now might be an opportune time, rather than waiting until November when we don't know who's going to be here. So maybe we, it's better suited for us to start some hard work when, when it's not necessarily self-serving.
And I will remind you that with a single vote, the next board cannot do anything you've done.
Alright.
Anything. That's just how it is. So.
Well, based on what you've heard, where would you recommend plugging in that one-hour presentation on open enrollment?
So I'm gonna give you a little bit of time to organize, get our staff ready for this, right? Like, I know we're excited about this, my team does not even see this coming, so. That's the nature of it, um.
What do you have on February 21st?
March 21st it is.
Alright, March 21st. Stacy, does that feel adequate? Fantastic. Alright.
Thank you.
Yep.
The DAC, I think, is, they said, they mentioned this in their update to the board, that that's something they're interested in, so, okay, we got it on there.
So we had a couple other hanging threads over there in the pending list, and then I was tracking this as folks were talking, so what else you got in the pending?
I have an elementary school lunch times.
Thoughts and questions on that? Stacy, Nicole, Lisa?
So this is not new, this has come up a lot over the past 15 years. One thing that I think we need to find out before we just automatically say there's not enough time for lunch is what, what happened last time this came up, is that it was discovered that if recess is first, there is plenty of time for lunch. So I think what we should find out first is how many elementary schools have recessed first.
Sounds like an RFI.
Okay, Nicole?
I was just gonna ask a question about how much we get involved in scheduling, sort of like, high school seven-period, eight-period late start. Like, how much do we, as a board, as a responsibility, I, I, as a pediatric dietitian, I think we need time to eat, but I just wanna make sure sometimes that we're, is that in our scope or not? And how do we handle, because this, this is scheduling, so it might come up in different school levels for different reasons, and.
Is this a policy question, or is this an operations question?
It's operational, I think, and it's come up many times over the past 15 years. And the last time it came up, which I think was like five years ago, six years ago, maybe seven years ago, was that it actually is adequate enough time to eat. The problem is when kids wanna go out to recess.
My kid falls in this box.
Yeah.
I don't eat lunch, why not? Because everyone's waiting for me outside.
Yeah.
Lisa?
I mean, yeah, I, I think we need to talk about this. I agree, it's been coming up a lot, but I don't think we've adequately addressed it, which is shown by a petition from hundreds of members of our community. And as a parent with elementary school kids, it sucks. My kids are hungry all of the time. Often they have one bite of food, their entire lunch will come home, and there's not enough time to eat. And it's recess is part of it, but it's not just that. There's amount of time that kids sit in front of their food and have to eat, and are saying something to somebody else, and then the entire meal comes. Like, I'm just saying, there's a lot of issues. I don't think this is a fringe issue. I think this affects all elementary school parents. I think most of us are stressed about it, and we deserve at least to offer our community talking about it thoroughly, even if no changes are made, although I think they will.
I mean, I, everything this has just said, I mean, I, same thing. My daughter comes home hungry every single day. She tells me, if I go to hot lunch, I literally eat a piece of bread, and there, I don't have time for anything else. And it's, it's not okay, and I agree, that there must be a very simple solution. Um, it sounds like there is, and, but I agree, we need to have our, we need to have some sort of conversation, or some sort of support, responsive community about this. Kitty?
Yeah, and, and piggybacking on that, since we're going to be providing free hot lunch, it would be such a waste of food and effort if the kids have, you know, only time to eat a piece of bread or something.
Okay, so one suggestion is start with the RFI to see if there's a relationship between the scheduling of, the sequencing of recess and lunch. Do that first, or do you wanna just jump to the conversation?
I think, I think that, given what I've heard from the board, that we put it on there to at least present what our current state.
Okay.
Right, to let folks know what are the things that get in the way, and let folks know the complexity, because it's not a simple solution. If it were a simple solution, then we would have already done it, right? That's not to say that we can't do it, right? But, you know, to Nicole's point, to do that, we'll have to give elementary schools clear direction on their scheduling priorities, which we already do, by the way, but it's, hey, you're gonna spend this much time on literacy, you're gonna spend this much time in these certain subject areas. We haven't said you're gonna have to provide this much recess, you're gonna provide this much lunchtime, right? So, when you, so to answer this, right, some schools, they're facility issues, right? You don't have, you know, the schools that were built in the 50s were not designed for, well, none of ours designed for, schools were designed for every student in the school to be able to access free lunch, right? Like, that's different, right? So I do think that this is, I do think that this is an appropriate thing for us to discuss. To the extent that it, the complexity to solve it, we'll just have to figure that out. We can do anything, we can't do everything, right? Right, we could do this, but we're gonna have to give something else up, and then what we have to decide is, right? You know, where does this fall amongst the priorities that we set? Uh, but we can't, like, so we can lean in, right? But this is a community issue, this has come up, and I think that this has resounded with the board as soon as it came up, wow, we should talk about this, right? And so I, I propose, and I'm thinking work session, so we're not taking public comment on this, we're just talking about it publicly, right? And so.
But we wanna be responsive to the community, I mean, like you said, hundreds of thousands, hundreds, millions.
I think that we'll, we'll do this, um.
I like the indecision dance there, did you see that? He was like.
Did you see that? Yeah, I've, I've been working on that.
Yeah, I remember when kids would go home for lunch. A lot of kids.
That happened when I was only just going to bed.
Why don't we do this on the 25th? Now, now, board members, I will say, what you're noticing is we're, we are, we have a lot of things for us to discuss and talk about, right? So you have more work session time, right, to just know and understand. We try to keep these to, you know, as a general rule of thumb, 30 to 45 minutes, right? But to the extent that you wanna talk, discuss, ask questions, those could go longer. I just wanna, just, just, just make that, just, hey, this is kind of, kind of bubbling up here.
Okay, Lisa?
Sorry, that just, this is maybe not the right time. That reminded me, I mean, we need to talk about, I think, our city council and a lot of other city councils and boards across the state and across the country give estimated timeframes in their agenda for how long each item will go, and I wonder if that's something that we could consider. I think it would be useful for all of us in terms of framing the way we approach some of these, understanding the amount of feedback that's helped or unwanted, and sort of getting through the agenda in an efficient manner. Do you understand what I'm saying to you?
I, no, I do.
Okay.
I can tell how long we're gonna talk, I mean.
We don't have to say, if we next, each agenda item had a minute count for approximately how long we anticipate that agenda item taking, I think that would be useful for members of the public who are trying to weigh in, as well as for members of the board, and everybody sort of involved in understanding what our agenda really looks like.
And then it gives the chair, or the mayor, or whatever, a chance to say, so we're at our 45 minutes. Is it the will of the group to continue on, or would you like to transition? Go ahead, Kathy.
I don't like the idea of cutting people off, there's a robust conversation going on.
I think mostly you flag it, and you just ask if people wanna go over. That's generally what I do. That, ooh, I like.
It helps staff members who are presenting later on, et cetera, to understand roughly how long it'll be, et cetera.
I would say Boulder City Council, I think, is uniquely.
Laura has raised her hand for the first time in the meeting.
Wow. And Boulder is uniquely terrible at this, so they, they put the time, they really, very rarely stick to them, so then I think the question is, is it, is the juice worth the squeeze? Uh, what are your thoughts?
The couple of times that I gave the public ideas as to when something was going to land and when people were going to talk about it, I got a phone call the next day with people yelling at me because it didn't go according to plan.
I'm just saying that I think it's more common than not in boards and councils, I think it's a useful metric for people to understand when things are coming, and I think it's helpful for keeping things on track.
Kathy, come on back to you, you're running the meetings, what are your thoughts?
Public participation, sometimes, because there's a lot of people talking about one particular topic, we want them all to go at the same time. It gets changed up, I don't necessarily know it's going to happen, and.
Take, for example, we have more people than, right, than we, we generally, I think, out of respect for the public, if it's more than an hour, we, we say we're gonna suspend the policy, it puts everything, kicks everything off, and we don't know who's showing up for public comment until after we publish the agenda. So how do we figure out that timing? We don't even know how many people.
I'm sorry, Kathy, if you're confused, we're not saying that everything has a timestamp, but a time estimate. So if we're expecting 45 minutes, for example, for an agenda item, if public comment is listed at 60, it goes 80, it doesn't change the idea that the next agenda item is meant to last about 45 minutes. We're talking about, you don't know how it helps? I think it's really pretty straightforward.
I'd like to get some other perspectives on this. Beth, Stacy, Kitty, Richard, Nicole, thoughts?
I, I think if, if, I, I think minimizing burden on our staff, so if we're spending time estimating, and we're getting emails, if somebody's like, oh, I thought that was gonna take, and then I tuned in, and I was late, or I was early, and then we're getting emails, that's just more time on our staff, I don't know if that's helpful personally.
Richard, and then Beth?
Well, I'm, I'm just kinda going back and looking at our own agenda in terms of, okay, which ones do need some time allocated to it? Like, for example, information items, uh, action items, you know, that kinda stuff. I think those, I mean, you could put a timestamp on that and say, hey.
Here's what I can do. I can tell you how long we're gonna present. Oh, go ahead.
Um, I mean, I used to joke that I feel like I majored in meetings. I've spent a lot of my life in meetings, and I think it does help to have some version of an estimated time. And like you said, I, I like the, the fact that it gives the, whoever's facilitating the meeting the opportunity, go guys, we're at our 45 mark, part of my role is to time-keep, shall we keep going or not? And just a quick check-in, like a time check-in, it can, and I think, I know Kathy would do that awesomely. Um, so I support the concept of having something like that on our agenda.
Can I come to you last, I'd like to hear from Kitty and, and from Stacy?
So, I mean, I like, in theory, the idea of having the time on it, and saying, this is perhaps a time estimate, is what we think, but no matter what we do, if it comes to the public, they're gonna be mad if it doesn't happen just like we said, just like they got mad when the snow didn't come. We do that all the time. They expect this is literally what's gonna happen, so if we do it, I would like for us to have a way to communicate to the community that it could change. And whatever we do, a lot of people won't pay attention to it, and they will still complain.
The great thing about complainers is they will always find something to stand up about. Stacy?
I don't, I don't actually have a thought.
No, no, one or the other. Kathy, what is, what are you thinking?
I don't, Rob, if you could just say, this is how long I think it's gonna take for my presentation. I don't like the idea of trying to figure out, guessing how long the board's gonna wanna talk, and what kinda questions we're gonna have. So you could say, and you, and you do a really good job, you try to limit the slides, like you were saying, to 12 or 14. I'd be okay if you just said presentation, but I'm not comfortable trying to figure out how long the conversation's gonna be. Because sometimes it surprises you.
Sometimes they're faster, sometimes they're slower, I hear yesterday.
People complaining about process instead of substance, and then you can get lost in places that you shouldn't be getting lost.
Let's hear from Kitty, and then Robbie had a suggestion.
Yeah, and so you're right, people, people will always find something to complain about, but let's not hand them another one on a silver platter, right? We get enough complaints as it is.
Right.
Rob, what are you hearing?
So, so, um, here's, here's what we can do, right? Right, and, and just so you all know, like, our entire cabinet sees every presentation before it gets ready, every single one. They all don't end up to what you see. They don't start that way, right, Kathleen? Like, we take a lot of care in making sure that information we present to you and the public is fine-tuned, is reviewed, looks good. And if it gets legs after a meeting, like, somebody takes it and prints it and goes around to the community with what we've talked about, that it makes sense. Like, we have, we have, we have a set of protocols and guidelines, and I'm a very harsh critic, and I fine-tune those things. So I'll, I can tell you exactly how long it's gonna take, because we present it before we present it to you, right? Now, we could create a standard of 15 minutes for board discussion, and tack that on to, or, or we can, I mean, the thing that's gonna be hard for me is, is thinking about how long I think you all should talk about something, right? Because then, right, you could say, Rob, why didn't you, you know, why did you think anyone talked about this for 10 minutes? How could you have not known that we were gonna have these questions that I didn't share with you before you, right? So, so I'm happy to do whatever you all wanna do, Laura, we can certainly do our best estimate, but I will let you know that I would take the presentation and tack on a standard amount of board discussion, right? I wouldn't be guessing this is gonna be 5, 10, 15, and I'd put 15 minutes. To, to Lisa's point, then at least you give folks a sense, right, you give them a sense, right? But, and, and then, you know, you can keep talking about it, but then you've actively decided we're gonna talk about this longer than we typically talk about something. So.
What if no board members wanna talk about a particular topic, and the customer, or the community that are, is so, no, well, this is going to start at 8 o'clock, and they tune in at 8:15, and it's over.
The burden, Laura, the burden is gonna fall on you for this, right?
I suspect that's why she has opinions, Kathy.
That's right, that's right, so, um.
Suggestion?
Well, I just say that just happened, when they're, Rob was running down the hall to find Glenn, because we, that particular meeting, we didn't talk about much at all. We were so far ahead of schedule.
Yeah, and that really will anger people.
Yeah, so it's tricky. I think you're, you know, damned if you do, damned if you don't, but.
So I'm hearing four people sort of thinking, maybe this isn't the best idea, one agnostic, and then a couple of people thinking, maybe we should try it. What if you start with assigning the time allocation to the one thing you know for sure, which is the, the length of the presentation?
For the public or for the board? Are you saying post it for the public, because then you're gonna have to explain to the public when they see it, they're not gonna understand it's just the presentation.
You have a separate agenda that you just shared with the board members?
They're gonna compare us to, who does this locally, Lisa, that, that you're aware of?
City council, and I think county commissioners as well.
Yep.
So they're gonna compare us to city council, and so how does city council do it?
Um, so in my experience, city councils do it differently. Boulder City Council is a unique animal. They will assign times, they will say staff presentation followed by council discussion, and they'll put parenthetically about 60 minutes, or whatever. And then, and theirs are highly variable by topic. They are always wrong. People are outraged whether you're on time, or if, if you're early or you're late, right? Because either way, you're inconveniencing someone. If they come on time, and you're late, they've now been sitting in chambers forever. I have personally sat in Boulder City Council, Council chambers until 11:00 PM, waiting for my 7:00 PM agenda item to come up. Um, on the flip, if you're ahead of time, then they're missing it. So, it, it's not without risk, and people now are accustomed that if you're, if you're going to a council meeting in Boulder, you, you go when the meeting starts, and you plan to sit there all day. That's just how they work there. I can't speak for anybody else in your county, um, most places have times.
I just, I just don't understand why you're comparing Boulder City Council with Boulder Valley School District.
Yep, I think it's different.
I mean, it's like apples and oranges there.
Well, I think it's about meeting efficiency generally. Well, I think it's about meeting efficiency generally. It feels like our meetings are often starting late, we're taking breaks at sort of random times, we don't know how long things are going. It just sort of feels much more inefficient and poorly organized than it may be.
Okay, okay, let's have one conversation.
That public is crazy.
So irony alert, when we get, we spend a lot of time talking about how to have more efficient meetings, and it makes this meeting less efficient, that's weird. Go ahead.
What's Elise's comment? So should I not take a bathroom break when Richard asks for one?
Right, okay, okay, we're spinning out of control. It sounds like this is something that merits more discussion.
We do have a proposed retreat coming up in March.
Yeah, I wonder if we wanna spend some more time on this, and I could also gather for you a wide variety of different ways that, that other elected bodies do this. Some do times, some do, uh, so what you were saying is not start and stop times, but estimated time allocations, and then some have a thing on the bottom that's like, hey, we're gonna do our best, but y'all are gonna have to flex, and we could talk about it, but we have more time specifically committed for it.
Can you also add to that, um, maybe do a little digging on how different school districts do public comment?
Yes.
Like, um, for example, Jeffco does agenda items at the beginning and non-agenda items at the end.
Yep.
I think that's brilliant.
Yep.
Personally. We have no agenda items usually. It's usually not agenda items. Anyway, I would like to ask you about that discussion.
He's a policy judge, like this now.
I love the way we do it.
Okay. Rob, you, you, maybe you and I could coordinate gathering some comparative things for, on the board to discuss?
Yes.
Fantastic.
Exactly, it'd be awesome. Thank you very much.
Okay. All right, so let's, let's table that one, thank you for raising that, this is an important one, so that you're all on the same page about how the meeting should run. What else you got?
The last thing is policy I K F, which is our grad requirements. We haven't talked about grad requirements for a while. Um, we can talk about them. Uh, these are, the, as a reminder, the, the state law sets very broad grad requirements, very broad. And our grad, grad requirements are pretty broad. And, you know, we, as we tried to make this work, and we were making this work as I was onboarding a superintendent, if you all would recall, uh, basically, lots of opportunities for stu-, high school students to meet their grad requirements, right? So we can give you an update on what they are, and talk about it. We could do this in a work session, where you could talk about it, ask questions, we can come back to you. I can, whatever, whatever the will of the board is, I'm fine. I think we've got a couple spots.
Sounds like we got thoughts. Kathy, and then Richard.
And part of that, Rob, would you be able, I'm curious, how many students do cats do? Can you know that? And how many students are doing the aspect of that?
Sure.
I'm just curious, is this, right, is it something that would be part of grad?
I can ask.
Okay.
To know what our students are gravitating towards and where the, so that would be my first, I would love to see that.
Richard, what's on your mind?
We just adopted a new course.
Yep.
Called ethnic studies. The city of Minneapolis, they also have a course called ethnic studies, and it's a grad requirement. For all students to take. So I want to do something that I have.
That's a, that's a different conversation making a requirement than-
Well, what, what, what we're discussing right now is whether you all wanna talk about this.
Yes.
Yes.
Right? And then, at that point, we could have discussions around what it should look like, what are things we could just think about.
Is that of interest to a majority of you? I see lots of nodding, yes.
Now, I'm gonna add this on a date that I wanted to be clear about, is, is, uh, June twentieth. Right? So that's our last work session. So what we, what we did last year is we, well, we, we did, you know, what we did is we canceled the twentieth work session and moved that to a meeting so we can approve the budget, because we didn't approve it by June thirteenth. So I could, why don't I put this, let's, maybe I should just leave that open?
I think you should leave it open.
Uh, okay.
Yeah.
Um, all right, uh, but I, I'm gonna need some time to get the staff to think about this, so if I could-
Thirteenth.
No.
Is that two?
What, what thirteenth?
June thirteenth. The day for our time plan.
Four. One thirteen, just now.
Why, why were you reluctant? Was there, what's the other item?
I, cuz I, I thought it was, I thought it was this.
Oh, okay, great, okay, got it, okay.
I just, if, if we add things here that we haven't been talking about, I need to be able to talk to the team, say, hey, everybody, here's what we decided we're gonna do, you've got five months to get your time sorted out to make it happen.
Okay, what's, uh, you still have two items impending, what are those?
Those are charter renewals.
Thank you, okay.
But, you know, only charter renew, charter renewals will go in here, I don't know how many charters we have being renewed, but, but that's just regular business.
Fantastic.
So I just, we have it there because the door is there.
So other hanging threads that I heard previously, one was gun storage, do we need to talk more about that? Or are you satisfied based on what Rob said at the beginning of this meeting? Gun storage, safety.
Remind me of what you said about that, I mean, I know this has been raised, but-
It was something that was, that came up on prioritization, and what I shared is that we're already doing lots of messaging at opportune times around Safeco store in Boulder County.
And the question on the table was, is there a way we can take more collective action around that, i.e. like resolution or sweeping?
Yeah, yeah, but again, I think, I think we have to get to the retreat topic first before we talk about passing more resolutions.
Got it, okay. So let that one lie for now, and then figure out what we're gonna do about resolutions and such, and then revisit?
I have a passing question that is asked.
Yeah.
I remember last year, we did Rob's contract in, in executive session, executive session, right? And we did that, I, am I recollecting this incorrectly, like, June, effectively, June, oh, June thirteenth or something?
Yeah, it's up here. It's up here, yeah.
I just wanna make sure we have that, cuz it's-
Yeah, so my evaluation and then contract is June thirteenth. That's where you share it publicly. We'll have my evaluation executive session on May twenty-third. And then I'll have, I'll have my document to you like a couple weeks prior, I think is what we typically do. So, yeah, we've got that all worked in.
So let's, can, can we go back to grad requirements again? Cuz you've got it on June thirteenth?
Yep.
Yeah.
What would that look like? Is it just like a, a report back to us?
I think what we'll do is, in a work session, in a work session setting, we would present to you what the current grad requirements are, and to the extent that, that students are taking advantage of the different options, try to give you some data on what that looks like. Right? That's, and then, we get a, because it's work session, it's more of a discussion, right? So if there's other things the board wants us to consider, right, you know, do we work grad plus framework into the grad requirements? Do you work, you know, some other, whatever that might be, right? You know, what are the benefits, what are the challenges of doing that? I think that would be the co- space of the conversation.
And, and, and such example, if we wanna add a grad requirement, uh, the timeline for that would probably be what?
You, you need to give runway, because, and you, and, and then what you would have to do is you'd probably start with a freshman incoming class, and you couldn't start with next year's freshman incoming class, cuz they're signing up for courses already, and the budget will already be spent. So it would probably, it would be the following year. And you would, then you would phase ninth grade, then tenth grade, then eleventh grade, then fourth.
But they could bring ideas about that to the June thirteenth, okay.
But you were thinking about, we're thinking about space like in February?
No, 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 that's why I said I didn't wanna talk about it, because we're not ready to have that conversation. This is not on the, our radar of our staff, we don't have, you know, by June, we can get our act together, I just need space to let them know this is what we're talking about, this is who's gonna do it, this is what the requirement is.
Coming back to guns, gun storage safety, do we delay on this one, circle back to it later after we have a policy conversation?
You said that I brought this up, but I actually don't recall that. I mean, I know we've talked about this topic a lot, we've talked about mom's command, but I don't recall asking for an additional conversation, so from my perspective, it's-
All right, I'm good.
It's done?
Yeah.
No, no, talk about it, because I, I am really, really concerned about what some of our neighboring school districts are doing around gun storage.
It's storage in their actual schools, not messages on phones, storing at home.
Uh, is that what we were talking about?
No.
That's what, that's what I was wondering, is it?
Okay. So do we need to-
No.
Schedule this one at this time?
No.
No.
Okay, thank you. Land acknowledgement was the other thing that I heard, where are we on that?
No, we said it. We had it. Oh, a shortened land acknowledgement, figuring out how we do that. Where, where do you want, I mean, I think the board should have a conversation around that.
Okay, work session somewhere.
February fourteenth, you all can talk about that, it's wide open.
Lisa, question, comment?
I don't, I don't understand why we're shortening it. Especially after we went to all the effort of having folks who are qualified to give it to us, give us statement that they felt good about, I'm not sure that it would be appropriate for us to-
What's the reasoning?
I thought in the beginning, we said we were gonna have a short version we read at every single one of our meetings.
You were thinking about timing?
And then the long one would be used for, like, special occasions and written, but I think we need to be ca-, like, codify that, make it clear, like, when do we use a short one? It, I mean, it's something that's easy, I think, to say and to hear. And that's what we originally were working from, from the outset, and I think that got lost when it went to the committee a little bit. Um, and so I think if we could come back, I think at least laying out when do we have a short one, yes or no, what does it look like, what are the parameters around it? And then, when can we give commitments to when we use a long one on it? It's just people's day, when we're opening a new school, when we're meeting for the first time in commu-, whatever it is. But I think being clear and to show respect for the people that work so hard on the long version, at the very least, whatever we decide.
Okay, I see nodding, uh, Kitty, and then Kathy.
So I wanna renew my objection to how poorly this statement is written. And when you get a statement that's written by a number of people, you add this in the sentence, that in the sentence, and something else. And I understand, um, honoring the work they did. But I also be concerned anytime the district has forward-facing, um, documents, that they look like they're written by people who are educated.
Ah, Kitty.
Okay.
What?
Okay, please don't descend down this path, go ahead.
I just find the same way, Melanie, it's the same way, that we talked about having a longer one, and we haven't had a good conversation about when, and we talked about the shorter version.
Okay.
I think it's a good work session topic.
I'm, I'll support that, I also wanna kind of take back on that. I think the opportunity to say when we codify it, um, and the longer version, that they, is an opportunity, maybe we could put it on a plaque, we can, you know, this is our time to kind of hold this up, as well as perhaps have a shortened version that we utilize in every practice.
Okay, work session, do we have space?
Valentine's Day, there you go.
All right, happy Valentine's Day.
Share the love.
All right. Okay, those were all the things that I heard come up that I wanted to make sure we got resolved. Beth, you asked a question, um, when we started, is there space or opportunity to add more things? Do you have more things you wanna suggest to the group, um, at this time?
We're only fifteen minutes, we'll probably know.
And just, fifteen minutes in today's meeting, but also just looking at the board, I think is also the question.
I will say, just as a point of order, that it's very hard to add after we've done all this. But like, so, to the extent that there's things you wanna talk about, you could share those with me, you could share those in agenda setting, and then that allows us to do this. Because, like, you could see, there's at least one work session from February, from January twenty-fourth on. We have some information, space at maybe April eleventh? Like, and, and I'm guessing between now and then, we'll do some shuffling and probably add one thing.
It looks tight. Um, Nicole?
I, and it doesn't, it's not staff work, but I have asked before about whether we can get an auto response for emails that get sent to our board to set expectations for our public, so like, thank you, we received your message, here's what you can expect from us as a response, because as a new board member, and maybe they're just playing with me, but I hear a lot, I don't get responses, why does Rob respond, and the board doesn't respond, why can't you res- like, there's just lots of cl- like, the public doesn't understand how we operate to messages that are sent to the, to them. And I think, just as an opportunity, I know there are other school districts that do this, like, if you send an email to B B C dot whatever, the board one, kick a message back, and it's not staff time, but it just helps for us operationally, maybe we talk about this in March, when we meet again. But just as an id- idea, I don't wanna add more staff time, I hear you on that one, but for us, as an operational efficiency or community messaging.
The board has talked about this pre-
I don't want that to say.
So, so the board has talked about this issue previously at retreats, this is a really good retreat conversation to make sure that we know what we would say, why would we say it, who sends it, what does that mean for how you individually may or may not respond? Uh, so I think it's a, it's a longer conversation. You cool if we add that to the retreat? Okay. Did you come up with anything pressing?
I guess not, I think I'm good.
Okay. Anybody else have anything pressing? If you wanna suggest it for here, but also for the retreat, cuz we have juicy retreat things. But, yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, and I've brought up board pay a number of times, and it was on the first little spreadsheet we saw.
Yeah, it's on the sixteen.
May sixteenth.
Hey, he's got it up there!
I'm sorry, I didn't have, and I think, yes, I'm sorry, sorry, I didn't notice, yeah.
And with, and with that-
And that's just a conversation, whatever, you know, you all wanna talk about it, Kitty's been asking about this for at least a couple of semesters, so.
I support her in that, and I also think we need some information in order to have a really constructive conversation.
Rob, Rob, what do you envision, uh, staff's gonna bring something back of that?
Yeah, I think we can ask Kathleen, or we'll have Kathleen just provide an update on what the law says. Um, we could do a survey of local districts, who's done anything? And then you can have a conversation on moving forward or not moving forward.
Okay, Nicole?
I just have a question about that. So because the elections are coming up again in November, am I understanding was that for somebody to be able to get paid, like, we have to have a, a plan approved before they get elected, like, you can't? So is that something we're concerned about, or we're gonna just say we're gonna wait till after selection, and so it would not be for the next election cycle?
So.
These are all the things we discussed.
I have no idea if you wanna do it or not, I do know that folks want to talk about it, so you can talk about it. If you decided in May sixteenth to put us on path, that gives us six, eight months to do something.
Okay, so that ti- that timeline was my question, thank you.
Okay, great question. Anybody else have a, anything in the back of your mind you wanna make sure that it's coming somewhere, cuz like this, it might already be on the list? Or something you wanna put on the topic for retreat? He's got these, he's got these, yeah.
So today, I know parking was difficult today, but at nine o'clock, there were only three board members here, and I actually have another meeting I have to get to, so I just want us all to be respectful of our time and get here on time for the next, whatever the next is. I know today, parking was a real bear, and I was very early, so I was able to manage that. But it's just, I just want us all to be respectful of our time and be on time.
All right.
And no one does it on purpose, I get that, I'm just saying that-
And I think it falls on anyone for some, things just happen.
Yeah, no, I know, but we're here at nine o'clock, we started at nine o'clock, the three of us.
Yeah.
You know, that's not useful either, so.
It's tricky.
Yeah.
Thanks for saying that. Anybody else? All right, so we have several things to talk about at an upcoming retreat that we're still working to schedule. Is that right, or did we finally schedule it?
Scheduled.
Is that the-
Okay. Yeah.
Um, well, I haven't gotten everybody's response for the item that was listed as advocacy on Doodle. We've got March thirteenth at eight to ten, or we've got March, uh, Wednesday, I think, from two to four.
So check in with Laura if you would when we're done here, so we can get that one scheduled. I currently hear three things that we was, wanna spend some time on. It was originally scheduled to talk about advocacy, and whether you wanna set policy, and visit about that, so that's always a fun one. Um, and then I heard two additional items today. One is whether and how you might wanna consider putting some time detail on agendas, and the third one is, do we wanna have an auto reply for emails that go to the board? Kathy?
And I would like to tee up the B policies to talk about them.
B policies, I'm, does that, I'm sure that means something to everybody who's nodding.
For work governors, oh, work governors.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
But, but Heather, as a group, not singling out anyone, so
Yeah. Okay.
I've talked to Kathleen a little bit about this, um, looking at them as, so that we aren't always moving on, that we're talking about them as a whole,
It's a good time to re-solve this.
Figuring out what we wanna do.
Okay, so that's four really big agenda items for a two-hour meeting. So maybe Kathy, you and Rob and I can get together and talk about how we wanna set that, set that up so that we are most efficient. Um, I think that one's gonna be really fun, I'm looking forward to it. Anybody else have anything you want to share at this time? If you haven't checked in with Laura, please do that for, get that retreat scheduled, it looks like there's lunch, if you're heading out, grab some for the road. Um, be safe out there, I assume the roads are still wet and unpleasant, and we'll see you in March, if you need to stay.
Thanks, everybody, I appreciate your time, this helps us, we're gonna have a great semester. Go team.
Say, be well, do good stuff.
Thank you.